Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is called Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. Item number two was called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for this issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards this evening?
None received. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? All right, seeing that, I'll close that portion of the meeting and move on to item number three, which is the issue review session. The only item on this evening's agenda is item 3A, Initial Recommended Five-Year Capital Improvements Program and Acceleration Strategies. And I see Lisette Camacho and, let's see, and Julie Hyder coming to the podium. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This presentation is the first look at the recommended capital improvements program for the next five years. With me today is Julie Hyder, our interim municipal budget director. Wydel Holmes is also going to be joining us later in the presentation. She's our interim, not interim, she's the strategic management and innovation director. I apologize. And she'll discuss acceleration models with you all. Our city charter requires we present the city managers recommended five-year CIP at least 90 days before the start of the fiscal year. This presentation meets that requirement. There are no funding decisions being made tonight. Just as an overall highlight, the total five-year CIP increased by about 0.5 or half a percent. That equates to about $9 million. That's expected because, as you all know, when we developed the current adopted CIP, we used that as the basis for the amounts in the general bond election, general obligations bond election last November. So there were very little changes in the first four years of the capital improvement program. And also, we added a new fiscal year, so that's fiscal year 2030, year five. For that fiscal year, we did provide the departments targets for their cash-funded and general obligation bond-funded projects. We do have department directors here to answer any project-specific questions. Before I turn over the presentation to Julie, I'd like to thank the departments for submitting their projects on time and also meeting their targets. Also, wanted to thank the budget staff, Lori Osakowski, Scott Gruber, Dominico, Carrie Taylor, and Benicia Benson for all their work in preparing the capital improvement program. With that, I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Hyder.
Thank you, Lisette. At this point in the budget process, we continue to be aligned with the council's strategic priority, strong community connections, and the performance measure transparency in government. Development of the city's operating and capital budget is a public process, and shown here are the public meeting dates, which began in February. We're now at March 20th with the presentation of the initial recommended CIP for the next five years. The remainder of the calendar includes budget review sessions in April and May, followed by tentative and final adoption in May, June, and July. Our public outreach included several presentations, social media, press releases, and a survey through Tempe Forum for the community, and another one specific for members of the mayor's youth advisory commission. The community survey was open from mid-January to the end of February, and I'd like to briefly review a summary of their results. We had 592 responses. For the question, "How should the city invest in advancing its strategic priorities?", the responses ranked in order of importance were quality of life, followed by safe and secure communities, sustainable growth, financial stability, and strong community connections. Interestingly, the survey from the MIAC members had the exact same ranking. The survey also asked residents to allocate $100 among programs and services. The top 10 from the community are shown here. There were six that overlapped with the top 10 in MIAC's list, and these are denoted by the asterisks. These six included homelessness and affordable housing, city infrastructure, public safety and crime prevention, and multimodal transportation. These are the MIAC results, the same five in order as the community survey. And here are the top 10 programs and services from MIAC. In addition to the six that were in common with the community survey, MIAC also included in their top 10 conservation, pre-K, and economic development. Survey results, including all of the open-ended comments, are included in your packet. Now, I'd like to just briefly review the steps taken over the past few months to develop the CIP. Departments have established comprehensive asset management programs that project their capital needs to maintain city infrastructure and replace at the appropriate time. Their proposed projects were included in your February 24th Work-Study Session packet. The Budget Office determines funding capacity from all available sources, including pay-as-you-go cash and bond funding. The Budget Office also met with each department to review their projects. These meetings also included other stakeholders to ensure a holistic look at the projects. The stakeholders were Strategic Management and Innovation, Facilities Maintenance, IT, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Office, and Engineering. As Lisette mentioned, the proposed five-year CIP program totals $1.95 billion, which is consistent with the current adopted five-year program. This chart shows the different sources of funding, with the primary sources as general obligation and enterprise-funded bonds, as shown in the tan and dark blue. And this slide is the five-year CIP by program category. I'll spend just a little bit of time here providing some examples of the types of projects in each category. So starting with parks and recreation at the top, this category replaces amenities such as playgrounds and ramadas in our neighborhood parks. It contains the urban forest program and also takes care of our swimming pools. Next, public safety includes projects for a new police substation, the rebuild of Fire Station 2, renovation of Fire Station 3, and construction of new Fire Station 8. Arts and culture includes asset restoration at Tempe Center for the Arts, the Edna Vial Center, and the History Museum. The transportation program includes the large project for PQI acceleration, maintaining city parking lots, and maintaining the inventory of streetlights and traffic signals. The transit category has projects for multi-use paths and streetscape. Storm drains has projects based on the Tempe Drainage Master Study. The large enterprise category has projects that replace water and sewer lines as well as upgrades our treatment plants. And finally, the general governmental category is a broad category that covers asset management in our existing buildings, the Affordable Housing Enhancement Program, historic preservation, IT, and sustainability and conservation. And now, I will turn it over to Lisette.
When determining the CIP funding sources, we have three categories that we look at. The first one is the enterprise funds. As you saw in the previous slide, this is the largest component. This includes water, solid waste, and the ambulance services. Revenues collected in this fund are from user fees. The next category is special revenue fund. These funds are restricted revenue sources and can only be used for their purpose. So for example, you wouldn't be able to use transit funds for non-transit expenditures. So this fund would include your arts and culture, transit, and highway user revenue fund. The next category is the general governmental. This is where you'll see projects from public safety, streets, parks, and general municipal infrastructure. For all these three categories, you can utilize cash funding to fund projects, and all three categories can also issue a variety of debt. So that includes revenue obligations, excise tax, and also, our main source of funding is the general obligation bond funding. We also consider other funding alternatives, and that can include federal grants and developer contributions. These funding sources you'll see in the transit program, street program, and then we also can utilize cash when we have sufficient fund balance to use for projects. With the cash component, you save on interest expense, but you will compete with the operating budgets because we typically use cash as the primary source for our operating funds. We are recommending to suspend cash funding of the capital improvement projects for the general fund and also the transit fund and the arts and culture fund. That's due to the loss of the residential rental sales tax revenue. Then the last funding alternative here on this slide is bonds. Bonds are subject to debt limitations, and for the general obligation bonds, we do require voter authorization to issue those debt. We also, for general obligation bonds, we use the secondary property tax levy. The secondary property tax levy is the revenue that we collect from secondary property taxes. So we know what that amount is on an annual basis. So on an annual basis, we know the amount of debt that we can issue. Revenue obligations typically occur when we issue debt from the water, wastewater, solid waste, so typically the enterprise funds. Those funds will pay those obligations. Typically, the debt structure is very similar. We issue an amount and we pay it off in 20 years. We've talked a little bit about the November 2024 bond election. The voters did approve about $582 million in voter authorization to issue bonds to fund projects to enhance community safety through public safety and roadway improvements, also projects to improve the quality of life in Tempe neighborhoods, and projects to increase the supply of affordable housing in Tempe. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide. The city of Tempe has a property tax stabilization policy, and this policy is a self-imposed policy. Some jurisdictions will not have a policy similar to this or they have a policy that's different from what we have. This policy was adopted in June 2011, and it hasn't been updated since then. As I mentioned earlier, we use secondary property tax levy to pay off the general obligation bonds, the debt that we've issued to fund our capital projects. The November election, we did have two new programs in there, and that is to accelerate the paving of all the streets in Tempe within four years, and we also added a new program to increase the affordable housing in Tempe. So those two programs, when we went to the voters, were above and beyond our property tax stabilization policy, and we are recommending to revise that policy. Currently, the policy allows for an increase in the total property tax levy of the CPI up to a maximum of 3.3%. We are recommending to update that policy to remove the reference to the CPI and allow for an increase up to 5%. That would allow us to accelerate the various projects that we talked about in the bond election. So again, primarily accelerating street paving in Tempe in the next four years and also adding the affordable housing enhancement programs. There's other things in that bond election, historic preservation, and also other projects for our public safety, as well as parks improvements and municipal infrastructure. If we receive consensus from mayor and council to revise the policy, we would be taking a resolution for your approval on the April 10 regular council meeting. So I'll pause here first to see if there are any questions on this and if we have consensus to move forward with the revision.
Sounds good. Thank you. Just one quick comment, then we'll go to Councilman Adams. I'm totally in favor of revising the policy. I was on council when that policy was first created many, many years back, actually during my first term. And the fact of the matter is, the revision of the policy, as you described very accurately, is to ensure that we can pay for the things that our residents have told us in overwhelming numbers that they actually want, and policies are always made to be revised. If you do something 15 years ago, a something could look very different in 2010 than it looks in 2025. So from my perspective, it's always, that's why you have city councils, it's to frankly update policies as they actually need updating. But frankly, all of these things from the approval numbers that we saw, I mean, one of the questions, we got 77% approval, the other one I think got about 72 or 73, and the other one got darn near 70. I mean, so I think that's a very strong mandate from voters that they want these things done. And if you're asking me to simply approve lifting up that cap a little bit to allow you to get all these projects done, I think that's very much what our residents would want. So I'm fully in support. Councilman Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am in total support of all of these recommendations. The GO bonds are going to be funded every year, which is great. That's what we need. And I like that we are improving our broken-down streets and that passed and that affordable housing still included in this. So great job, as usual, to both of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can I take that, Benice, consensus that we're okay with that policy change? Okay? Wonderful. You've got consensus on that one, Lisette. Thank you.
I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Hyder.
Over the past several years, we've seen significant inflationary increases. As departments put together their CIPs, they've had to be cognizant of the impact of inflation on their project costs. In order to cover these increases, we have maximized our GO bond funding to capacity, and in some cases, departments have had to prioritize their projects and scale back or defer other projects to future years. The CIP that you have before you represent projects that are primarily focused on addressing public health and safety, maintaining city assets, and projects that align with or accelerate council performance measures. These criteria are the first lens that CIP projects are evaluated. We also have a second level of prioritization, shown in the dark blue chart, such as whether there is a legal or contractual obligation or whether there is outside funding such as grants. Please note that this year, we did not actually score the projects because we had given the departments their financial targets based on the bond election. This is our bubble chart. It's a visual depiction of the projects that are funded by GO bonds. The X-axis, the horizontal line, shows the range of projects from system expansion to asset preservation. The Y-axis, or the vertical line, shows the range from efficiency and effectiveness to public health and safety. And what you'll notice is that the majority of our projects are clustered in the upper-right quadrant, which means that they scored high on asset preservation and health and safety, which is where we want to have our focus. Some examples of projects in this quadrant are PQI acceleration, Fire Station 3, and replacement of public safety communications equipment. In the online packet, council and the public can hover over the bubbles to see exactly what projects make up each category and the dollar amounts. And then this slide is just a summary of some select project highlights, many of which we've already mentioned today. This list demonstrates the breadth and depth of the city's capital program, ranging from public health to quality of life, sustainability and conservation to preserving our past. It really is a CIP that touches all facets of the city. And now I will turn it over to Wydel Holmes to review acceleration models.
Good afternoon, Wydel.
Good afternoon. Wydel Holmes, Director of Strategic Management and Innovation Office, I believe. And good afternoon, mayor and council, so far. Let's sign this to memo. Anyway, good afternoon.
We'll take a vote on it, I guess.
Happy this afternoon to share with you our 25, 26 acceleration models. And just as a reminder, these performance measures, and I'm going to move forward here on the slide, these performance measures were identified through your Startool exercise last fall, and then were prioritized based on the top five. We like to narrow our focus to have super focus on our achievements. These priorities are also in alignment with our 2024 community survey, and then also of note with our Tempe Forum survey as well as with our MIAC survey. So I'm not surprised that quality of life, safe and secure communities, as well as sustainable growth and development, all rose to the top. The performance measures for acceleration were also, through the Startool, an early opportunity for staff to have early direction from city council, and so we thank you for that. That helped us both in our CIP development as well as in our soon-to-be operating budget. But most importantly, over the last seven months, our performance measure teams have worked on strategies to help achieve these targets or move the needle in the next fiscal year. And so I'd like to share those with you tonight. Also thanking our performance measure teams, their strategy department, the strategy partners that come from multiple departments, and also include some of our community partners. We don't limit ourselves to just our city organization to achieve these goals. And then also, one of our newest team members in Strategic Management and Innovation Office, Stephanie Martinez, she's our strategic initiatives manager, and she helped facilitate these planning sessions and going forward. I'll tell you a little bit more about some of the work to actually create that culture around achievement. So the first performance measure that I'd like to share with you is our ending homelessness. And the focus of the strategies, I'll just highlight a few for you, is to reduce our encampment response time from five days to two. All of our strategies, we look for measurables from X to Y by win. So those are the formats that the details will be on our dashboard. We also would like to, one of the goals is to increase the case management engagement. Those are our community members who are already engaged in case management but have not probably fulfilled or moved through our whole continuum of care to permanent housing. And so by really focusing on that, we're kind of moving where we also have great opportunity for greater and sustained resolution. And then also, just an example, is increasing our annual graduates from our Tempe Works program that we have in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Councilmember Kidding. One item that I'd also like to focus on is the integration of prevention strategies. And one of the innovations for our organization is to work with some of our research partners and try to determine what are some predictive indicators so that we are actually being able to have strategies before someone becomes homeless or before a family experiences that. So that is a little bit of a shift in regards to trying to escalate that a little bit more, and also that would be some leading work in regards to innovation in this arena. So excited to come back at a later date to share that with you. The CIP reflects what Julie Hyder, I also promoted her to councilwoman, by the way, so Julie Hyder and Lisette Camacho, you're welcome, shared with you earlier in regards to our investment in non-congregate shelter, and those details again are in your packet. And just want to also say that in regards to our housing inventory, Tempe continues to lead the way. Like to also highlight that this approach to maintaining our housing inventory, especially in our affordable housing category, is really supported through the inter-collaboration work with three specific departments, that's Community Health and Human Services, Community Development, and Economic Development. And I highlight that because we know that all of these performance measures are achieved through multiple department approaches, and it's not just one singular department. Obviously, we have leadership departments that take this on, but their collaboration and having those tough conversations on what else can we do in a way that maybe we haven't already experienced or provided from another department, and how can we all pitch in and provide strategies for this. So for our housing inventory ratio, looking to expand the redevelopment area fee waiver that's already in place for Apache, engaging with IDA for additional funding and support, and then providing LIHTEP-GAAP financing for our grants and loans program through Hometown for All. So those are some of the strategies, just wanted to highlight for that. You already have in your packet the initial recommendation of over $34 million for the affordable housing measure. The next performance measure is the feeling of safety in our neighborhoods. Again, very much aligned with our community survey and the surveys that we did on Tempe Forum and with our MIAC, with our youth commission. The strategies around this do not relate to any CIP, so this is where we go back to. We shift resources, we try to partner, we think of different things that we can do and implement. And the focus is on suppression operations. We found a lot of success with that last year, as well as moving and increasing the community responders' calls for service from 5% of total calls to police departments to 5.2%. Remember, this is an alternative response that we can provide to our community instead of our traditional law enforcement, and so that is again, a leading edge provided by our police department. And then expanding some of our investigative tools, such as our access to our cameras, and expanding those from about 2,000 to 3,500. The next performance measure relates to our, again, safe and secure communities. And I'd like to highlight on our police services satisfaction that while you will see the current value of 73.8% in red, I would like to also remind you and our community that Tempe doesn't settle for just average. We are in red because we choose to be one of the top 10% cities. And so if you recall from our community survey, we are exceedingly, at least 20 points above the national and mid-sized cities for this particular measurement. And so while we say we're in red, we would be very much a dark, dark green in other communities. This is also evident in regards to a three-year positive trend in regards to satisfaction with police services. So just wanted to highlight that. And some of the strategies is really based around training. The police department recently adopted core values, and I'd like to share them because I really think they speak to the heart and the values of Tempe: professionalism, compassion, and excellence. And so a lot of the training will be focused around that. Also proactive policing. A lot of this is building relationships, not when there's a call for service, but before, and so that we have those community interactions and relationships already established. And then bringing back our police citizen academy and guiding at least 25 residents through that academy this year. So again, about relationships, looking at this from the whole human perspective is a different way of approaching satisfaction with police services. And then, as mentioned prior, we've talked a lot about pavement quality index, and with the trust and confidence of our community, the vote in November has provided us a new target of 82. That is 12 points above just the 70 industry standard. So again, Tempe achieving more, having more ambition around our performance measures. And part of the strategies are about our response time for when we get calls into 3-1-1, to pavement maintenance, as well as rehabilitation plans for our program, and then essentially with Tempe's growth and development coordinating with our utility companies, because we're impacted both positively and some challenges sometimes with our growth. So looking at this from a whole picture, not just how many miles of roads can we repave, there's a lot that goes into this. And I know from my career, learning this from our team has just been fascinating, and how important this is in regards to safe and security as well as to our traffic flow in Tempe. But to do this, we have to have what we call an operational system. So very similar to your computer, we have behavioral systems in organizations. And so our Tempe Accelerates Performance Team is going to be working on evidence-based practices. And what this really means is having a cadence of report out, having a cadence of achievement. This develops a leadership culture around looking at goals and targets and how do we support each other through collaboration and also accountability. And this will also be led by Strategic Management and Innovation Office, but primarily, we will also be reporting on it on a quarterly basis to our city managers' team at our directors' meetings. And what's important about that is we all know that what gets measured gets done, but also what gets highlighted, you can maintain that momentum and that cadence for achievement. And so excited to continue the second year of this program in regards to kind of a new operating system for the city of Tempe organization. And with that, I will conclude and turn it back over to Lisette and Julie, or if you have any questions about performance management and acceleration models.
Thank you, Wydel. Councilmember Kidding? Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure you know what I want to talk about. I think 18 annual completions for Tempe Works would be an outstanding achievement. It'd just be momentous compared to where it started. So you guys all did that, and kudos to you and your team, if you're able to hit that goal. I'd never stop talking about it, so.
I will be certain to pass along to our Community Health and Human Services team. I just get the privilege of presenting their great work, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Adams.
Yes, for six and a half years, I've preached about PQI and improving it, and you are all doing it, so it makes me really happy. I'm so glad the bond passed, so we can continue to increase. I think when I first started, it was like at 50, Shelley, you might be able to help me.
About 59.
53%? When I first started, 26, 27, 18?
59, yeah.
Okay, 59, thank you. So we're up to 60, but we're going to 82, so we're really moving in the right direction.
Right, and reducing that time from 12 years to four is really incredible, so.
Yeah, yeah, it is, because it's a hard thing to measure. So anyway, I really appreciate it, and I keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just would like to take the opportunity to remind, because pavement quality index relates to all of our roads and streetways here in our neighborhoods, that we do have a map to share when projects are planned, when they are completed. Start at performance.temp.gov, and we can walk you through it from there, so.
Vice Mayor Garland and Councilman Brach?
On your ending homelessness slide, I liked when you were talking about the number six acceleration strategy for the prevention research, because I think right now, after the time that we just spent in DC and all the meetings that we attended to talk about what this current presidential administration is doing, what things that we need to be thinking about and looking at, that is a really big concern for me about what's going to happen to the people who are on the border of not being able to keep themselves in their home with their families. So that one is really, really important to me, and I'm so, so glad that you're doing that. So thank you so much, I think it's wonderful to have it on here.
I share that excitement too, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Brach.
You took the words right out of my mouth I was going to talk about, but I also had one other thing I was going to ask. When it comes to the road pavement, is there any way that we can get this out to our neighborhoods, like the HOAs, so they can know ahead of time to actually start repairing the neighborhoods for it?
Right. One thing that I failed to mention is that the PQI is part of our Tempe Refresh Program. And so along with several departments, including the municipal budget office, we're looking at different ways to communicate. Not only did we hear you, we're working on it, and we're now completing it, and here's our progress on these. So PQI would definitely be part of that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Councilmember Keating?
I'm sorry if you covered this already. When does work on the roads, when is that supposed to start?
This year.
This year?
We already have work on it now, so.
Madam City Manager?
Mayor, Councilmember Keating, next week you have the contracts coming forward to the mayor and council for approval, and then starting at the beginning of April.
Oh, that's great.
We just had a conversation, and we will have signs on every project, thanking our residents for trusting us with the bond, and that this is happening now, so.
Appreciate that, I think that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brach.
Is there, can be like a database that we can actually have the process progress showing throughout on our online, and you know, so everybody can actually see it, and we can talk to it and have it out there?
Yes, in fact, I spent part of yesterday working with our communications team, talking about our completed stamp on our digital communications platform through our hub site with information technology and Dr. Stephanie Dietrich. So again, we've highlighted specific projects as part of our signature Tempe Refresh. There's a lot going on, so we still want to be able to communicate in a very easy way. So there are some projects that align to not only what are their community priorities are, but how we can present that for people to know the status of those projects.
Can we also get like a one pager for us?
Sorry, can we also get like a one pager for us, so when we're out in the community and we're talking about our wonderful city, that we can have that information with us at all times?
Sure, maybe we'll even include some Tempe Refresh stickers, right?
I bet.
We'll do that. Great, great, thank you.
Anyone else from council, commentary questions? All right, great.
All right. Thank you, Wydell. Have a good evening.
Oh. You sure?
Sure, okay, thank you.
Quick thing too, thank you, Wydell. Anything else with Julie or Lisette?
Mayor, member city council, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. All right, no, I was going to say as well, I really appreciate the, not, I can't think of the right word for whatever reason, but obviously, the sort of advertisement, for lack of a better term, of a lot of the work being done, because sometimes it's interesting, you'll vote for a bond, you know, with a 77% approval to fix the streets, and then two months after the work starts, we'll start getting emails of people going, why are the roads torn up, or why are you doing this? It's like, you voted for this, and we appreciate the fact that you voted to improve and upgrade your city, but you voted for it. So, Councilmember Keating?
To that point, and I don't know if it's already too late for this, because the ship may have sailed, but I don't know if you remember during the American Recovery Act of 2009, it said this project is funded by the American Recovery Act. This road is being repaved by voter-approved bonds, whatever, by the city of Tempe.
That's exactly the wording that Chris Baxter and the team is working on.
Way ahead of me, fantastic. There we go. Thank you.
Love it. Yes, Councilman Adams?
So I have a story to tell you on Warner, people complain about Warner all the time, Warner Road, and, because it was a mess. And so then we finally, you know, we're working on repaving it, and then people were like complaining that they had construction. And I said, well, you have to have construction to have smooth roads. So I would just encourage everyone out there that when we are repaving the roads, that it is for a good reason. It's been determined as a big problem, and you will no longer have your gauge go off that you're going to get a flat tire, or whatever that is, that there's a warning, a road warning on some cars, so it will be okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Chris Baxter-Ging, are you online, and do you have a comment as well?
I am, thank you. And I just wanted to make mention that we do have signs. We also have in the works a plan to make sure that every single neighborhood that is getting paving done has some street signs, as well as in our Tempe Today, Tempe This Week, we will be including information about which streets are up next to give people advance notice. And we will have some larger signs that Rosa mentioned in some of the neighborhoods. This is being funded by your bond election, and here's the percentage of work that is done.
Thank you. Chris, I think it's wonderful, too, that you mentioned neighborhoods. I think that's going to be the thing that will go over so exceptionally well with members of our community, because I remember talking about the bond election at the time that it was going on, and people were saying, well, are you going to be just simply fixing the arterial streets and the collector's streets? And what we talked about, no, we're talking about fixing every street in the city, including those in your neighborhood. That got such a resounding kind of applause from anyone I talked to, north, south, east, west, here in the city of Tempe. So I'm excited about those contracts being on the agenda next week, and excited about the work getting started. Councilman Brach?
Also, Chris, is there any way possible that this information can go out to the schools? Because that's another way of bringing community together, because people read their kids' information, and when they bring it home. So is it, if we can distribute it to the schools, so they'll know ahead of time that this neighborhood is going to be worked on also?
Councilmember Brach, thank you. We have a peach jar flyer that goes out monthly, and I will see if we can have that added as a component of that campaign.
Thank you. Councilman Brach?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like it's worth repeating the positive feelings about the communication. I think you've heard me over the years say and talk about, we need to communicate, we need to tell people when we're tearing something up what's going on, because then people just, I'm looking at Jeff Tamilevich, he's heard me say it also. When we communicate, people have a better understanding, and will more easily perhaps understand and agree and put up with any, forgive, and put up with any minor inconvenience, minor temporary inconvenience. And it's a follow-up. I think we owe the community that communication, so thank you. Thank you to all of the staff that are working on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chen. Councilman Adams?
Yeah, just a quick update on, the PQI had 56 in my head for a reason, and it was because it was in 2015 that it was as low as 56.2. So we have made a lot of progress over the last few years, and I just wanted to clarify that point. So it wasn't 59, it was 56 in 2015. So thank you, and we're going in the right direction.
We most certainly are.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the council? Any further comments or questions on that item? All right. Hearing none, I'll move to item number four, call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, any other cards?
None received, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you so much. Let me just look to see, is there anyone in the audience still, though, who wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close item number four and move on to item number five, committee of the whole. First up, item 5A, proposed council subcommittees. Per City Council Rule 7, subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session of the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee, and the proposed members of the subcommittee, and obtaining approval of the majority of the council. So are there any proposals this evening from the council for a new council subcommittee? No? Okay, sounds good. Then I will move on to item 5B, council subcommittee status updates as needed, or recommendations for council direction. Let's see, item 5B1, are there any updates for the heat safety for Tempe and contract workers council subcommittee? Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, I have a small update. We had our first subcommittee meeting yesterday. A lot of work went in ahead of time before this meeting, and you know, Keating met with every relevant department in that time, met with stakeholders, him and myself, kind of made the rounds of everybody to try to get the feedback, so we moved forward kind of deliberately, knowing, you know, what we were kind of biting off here. And I'm very proud to say that we have come to consensus in our subcommittee to draft an ordinance for consideration, which we'll introduce to the public at our next subcommittee meeting, which will be sometime in April, whenever staff is ready. But this is a unique thing in that it will be the most robust heat safety ordinance in the state, and will be revenue neutral to the city of Tempe. So once again, Tempe is kind of leading on these issues that are important to our workers and our contracted workers, so I'm very pleased with it. Thank you, Councilmember Brach, Councilmember Brandberg, for being a part of that subcommittee. Had 41 people in it yesterday, which has to be some kind of record. So, thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much, appreciate it. And let me just ask a quick question for City Attorney. We don't need any kind of council direction on that, it's just sort of a status update, just saying they're preparing to bring it forward, correct?
Mayor, that's correct, yeah, it's just an update, so there's no direction tonight.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you so much, appreciate that. Next up, item 5B2, increased advocacy for Tempe youth with disabilities council subcommittee. Councilmember Brach, any updates on that?
I have no updates at this time, just to let you know that our next meeting will be March 28th at 1:00 PM at City Hall.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you. And the mayor is on the committee with me.
Yes, I am, most definitely, thank you, council member. Next up, item 5B3, nuisance ordinance council subcommittee. Vice Mayor Garland, any updates?
Yes, we had a meeting today, thank you, Mayor, and we have consensus to move our ordinance forward to a work-study session, so it will be coming to council.
Wonderful, thank you so much, appreciate it. And next up, 5B4, revitalization of Tempe Town Lake Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Ann Berg, any updates?
No, at bits, we have our second meeting next month, so watch out, in a future work-study session.
Wonderful, thank you so much. That brings me to item number six, future agenda items. Members of the city council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council members like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? All right, seeing none. That brings me to item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I've got a couple of announcements this evening. First one is that Ron Pies will be honored by the Cactus League Hall of Fame for his outstanding contributions to spring training in Arizona, both on and off the field. So on behalf of the trustees, it's my honor to congratulate former City of Tempe Administrator Ron Pies on his induction into the Cactus League Hall of Fame. Ron has been a longtime advocate of the spring training industry in the state of Arizona. He served as president of the Cactus League Baseball Association, and was a strong advocate for spring training facility funding at a time when poor facilities threatened the existence of the Cactus League. Ron retired back in 1998 as Tempe Director of Community Services after 30 years with the city. So I wanted to congratulate Mr. Pies on getting inducted into the Cactus League Hall of Fame. And item number two, you know, on myself, whatever, and I know the entire council feels the same way, I know we are all deeply saddened by the passing of former council member Joseph Peace Burkley, who was a dedicated public servant educator and lifelong advocate to this community. Joe's impact on Tempe really did span decades. He shaped generations as a teacher and as a principal, he served on the city council, and he tirelessly supported education through the Tempe Impacts Education Foundation. His leadership, kindness, and unwavering commitment to service earned him numerous honors, including the Don Carlos Humanitarian of the Year Award. As we all know, Joe's passion, his kindness, and his leadership will never be forgotten. His work uplifted our city, and his legacy will continue to inspire future generations. So on behalf of the City of Tempe, I wanted to extend my heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and everyone who was, who actually had the opportunity to know him. And I know that goes on behalf of the entire city of Council Joe, as we all know, was a true Tempe legend, and someone who contributed that much to the city, their legacy is going to literally live on, not for generations, but forever. So Joe, we miss you, and obviously, we wish the best in all the condolences to his family during what we know was a very difficult time. Next up, Madam City Manager, any announcements this evening?
No announcements this evening, thanks.
Thank you very much. The next regular work-study session is going to be on August, April 3rd, not August. Yeah, okay, you know, we're going to go with actually April 3rd, 2025, for the next work-study session, and that means this meeting is a, yes?
There's...
Oh, oh, hold on here, you know what, can I give a little point of personal privilege, Mr. City Attorney, for an announcement from Vice Mayor Garland?
Certainly.
All right, yes, Vice Mayor Garland.
I was just going to say, I know there are thousands and thousands of people watching this work-study session. One of them happens to be my husband, who always watches the work-study sessions and council meeting sites. I want to say, my husband, we're celebrating 32 years, our anniversary is today. So I just want to say, Scott Garland, I love you tons, thank you for being my partner for 32 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
And that is, and that is a perfect way to end this meeting. We are adjourned at 4:49 PM. Thank you so much, everyone.